I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to your republic, which stands on one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I am unhappy to announce that once more we have lost one of our students in Lancaster County this time at Don Eagle. It tears my heart out every time I read about a young person dying this way. But will you please join me in a moment of silence and respect for Joe Williams and the family and friends he leaves behind? Thank you. Mrs. Martin, may we have attendance?
We have seven school directors present tonight. Mr. Gensel and Mr. Hurst are absent.
I would note that in attendance are the board officers, vice president, secretary and treasurer, the superintendent and the administrative cabinet. This is our work session, the first of two monthly meetings at which we receive most of the informational presentations as well as discuss and deliberate future decisions. There also are some action voting items required on timely issues or to meet time restraint deadline. Our meetings observe all legal requirements and our school code and our district policies to the best of our understanding and ability. All agendas and related public documents are available on the district website. Are there any changes to the agendas, deletions, additions or corrections?
There is not.
If not, I would accept a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda.
All those in favor say aye. Opposed, abstentions? If not, we approve the agenda. And we will start with the superintendent's comments.
All right. Good evening, everyone. A few updates from around the district. I typically don't comment too often on athletics, but it's been a great fall season. And just wanted to point out, we've had three of our teams already win the section two regular season. Our golf team, our boys soccer and our girls field hockey to go into Lancaster Lebanon League playoffs. And our football team, as most people are aware, is doing pretty well too, still undefeated. So should have, hopefully have a fourth team there winning a fall section two regular season championship. Hopefully, all of you saw in Lancaster Online last week, there was a really nice article on our boys soccer coach, Dave Hartlob, for his 300th win. As you know, Mr. Hartlob's a teacher at our high school and been a coach for, I believe, about 25 years in the district. So a really nice write-up on him. On the other end of the spectrum, if you did see the Buckskin Blast that went out last week that Katie sent out, I encourage you to look at it. Our Leola pre-K students made the news. They were on WGAL for the morning wake-up call. So really encourage you to check that out if you have a chance. And then today, today we had our Common Ground Conference in the district. All of our teachers participated in over 30 different presentations that took place throughout the day on topics, on things from a variety of topics, everything from AI to yoga for teachers, to intellectual engagement, STEM-related topics, poverty and homelessness. It was just a great day, really well organized. So kudos to Dr. Cozer and her team and a whole bunch of people who worked behind the scenes to pull it off. It was a really big event and got a lot of positive feedback from our teachers on that today. Remind the community that this Wednesday is our Community Bonfire, a big annual event we have leading up to homecoming weekend this weekend. So a big, big weekend around here. And one final piece of information, this is just specifically for the school board, a reminder, November 18th is the Saxon Stump Education Law Breakfast, if any of you would like to attend. We did get a little bit more information on it. I believe I shared the save the date a while back. But the topics this year are going to be parental opt-out rights and generative AI policymaking. So two pretty important topics right now that they'll be focusing on. So if you're, it's 7:30 in the morning on November 18th. If you'd like to attend, just let Marilyn know and we'll get everybody RSVP'd. That concludes my report.
Are there any comments in the board on district activities? Well, I'd also mention, even though we only have a couple more members to qualify, three of our districts had their all-nod's presentation breakfast. And that was started at Kemp, I believe, 15 years ago at Brownstown. And it's still going and has caught on to two other elementary schools. Also presented was a co-op between the seeds bridging the gap and our pupil services on IEPs and 501 plans. And Dr. Hartman already mentioned the upcoming bonfire. This is the next time in the agenda. If anyone in the public would like to address an agenda item, if not, we'll move right on to the review of the BAA grants. Mrs. Myers.
I'm back. Okay. We only have two this time. The first one is from Track and Field. They put in for a request for tents. Unfortunately, last track season, you would have thought was football season with the weather and the wind. So they got pretty damaged where they're completely bent. So they don't really stand up the right way. So they wanted to go with the Easy Up, and it came as a complete package, which is quote number three, if you go down. Yeah. Quote number three. So it was quite a cost difference for that one as well. So that was a good choice. So we approved that one. And then the other one comes from Ms. Maggie at bowling. She would like to finally get a tablet so she can video what they're doing at practices and what they're doing at their games when they're in the different bowling alleys and be able to use it all the time. And that was, I just told Janet, whichever one works easier because it's all the same price across the board.
Questions or comments? If not, we'll put this on the consent agenda.
Do you need them approved tonight?
No, they said that they'll do it next week.
No.
Yeah. No, it's not because we, we'll be back next month.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Question?
Oh.
For me?
Yeah. After I move, they always have a question. So sit back down and get comfortable.
Oh, not necessarily for you, for Deb. Is there a, I keep forgetting how this works with the grants, this one and the
And the CVE, whatever that Jerry Houskin is with. Is there a specific budget for this? No, it's for, for the education foundation. They provide us with the money and we spend it specifically on the grants that we're working on. There's no specific budget for us. It's a wash and it's out.
Okay. And for these, for the Buckskin Alliance?
We do fundraisers and stuff.
Yes.
The what?
We do fundraisers. That's the craft show and the Harlem Wizards. And then we get portions of the participation fees and the light rentals and what else am I missing? There's a couple other things in there. So we, our craft show and our wizard game and it used to be the elimination dinner, things like that, we would be put into that.
I have, I'm doing an update this evening on the finances for 2425. And I have a slide that I can point out to you that'll show you some of the breakdown of all the different budgets we have.
Thank you.
And that'll answer your question.
Thank you. Like I said, I just, I need to be reminded.
Sure. I think your question is, is it taxpayer-funded? The answer is no. It is not taxpayer-funded. They fund it themselves.
And I think to add to that, because I think it's an excellent question, it does get confusing. Typically, in a lot of organizations like this, like the BAA and CVEF, they're not, they're outside organizations. They're their own organizations. The only reason that we even go for school board approval is, and correct me if I'm wrong, Deb, is because we Adele, is because we kind of take, we allow them to use our accounts. Like, the money passes through our accounts, but it's really their own fundraising.
We have a contract with BAA that includes the bylaws and these approvals.
Right.
Thank you.
Okay, you better sit down quickly.
Thank you.
I would tell you, I had spoken to Mrs. Hunsinger about all the different funds we have, because I got lost, you know, which ones have funds, which ones are allowed to carry surpluses. And when that's all clear, she's going to present it. It's something I figured everybody needed to be clear on.
Yes.
Okay, you have three issues on our agenda.
I sure do. The first two are going to be very quick, I believe. So the Conestoga Valley Education Association is looking to rent the Smoketown Elementary Auditorium next Tuesday, October 21st, to hold a forum. They're requesting that the rental fee of $55 is waived for this use of the auditorium.
I think it's a matter, they have the $55 without a strain, however, I think it's a courtesy for the services they give us that we not charge.
When was this, sorry? When was this request submitted?
The request was submitted, I have it right here, on September 25th.
Okay, because that's outside of the 30 days, from the 21st, 25th to 21st.
Okay.
So.
Do we have a 30-day requirement?
Yes.
Yes.
It's in the lim, it's...
Well, I guess they're going to waive that, too.
Ego-wise, good.
Actually, it may have been put off because originally the district had, I think, an email or communication to see if we wanted to be part of this. And my idea was absolutely not. We accept whoever's elected, and I didn't think it was good for us to get our fingers into any sort of election.
Right. Now, this is coming from CBEA. Are they hosting it, or are they asking for the waive, the fee waiver, for somebody else to rent it?
My understanding is that they are hosting it.
They're sponsoring it.
Yeah.
They're sponsoring it.
And they're bringing in, I think it may have shown on here, they're bringing in people to ask their position on certain issues. It's not going to be a debate or...
Right. My, if, if this goes to vote, we have to, one, approve the, with outside of the 30-day notice that was not presented for the paperwork filled out. So there's a couple things here that are not...
Would you like to make a motion to cover the whole, to cover both issues?
Well, I think that's something for next week when we go to vote for it, but they're outside the 30-day, 30-day, that is in policy 707. To fill the paperwork out. So I think it's kind of a moot issue.
What are you suggesting we do? Vote to waive the policy?
Well, it's, one, it's for review, it's not for vote. But if we, like, right now, they're in violation of policy 707 because they're not in that 30-day window. They already violated the policy just to fill out an application. So that's, like, right now, it's a moot point, like, you didn't follow rule number one, so why should we consider it when you didn't hold up your end of the bargain to come to us to ask for these things? That's where I look at, I look at policy.
Is that an issue for anybody else?
I would just add, and I don't see all the facilities requests that come through, they go through the business office, but I think there are times when outside groups ask to use our facility on pretty short notice.
Yes.
So the policy allows us to say no if it's not within that 30 days. But I can't say for certain whether or not we have or haven't always honored that. The board approval is for the waiving of the fees. We don't, not all facilities usage always...
Right.
...through that. So I'm, I mean, Adele, I'm assuming you, do we sometimes get requests that are on a pretty short notice, that if we can accommodate, we try to accommodate?
Yes.
Or do we always say no if it's outside of 30? I don't know the answer to that.
If the facilities are available and we can process the request in a timely manner, we have permitted groups to come in if they've submitted an application within that 30-day period.
Do we need to relook at this policy to add verbiage, such as, you know, if it's within 14 days or whatever, so it's not, because it says 30 days?
Are you suggesting we not waive the fee because they weren't timely?
Well, if it's precedent that we let other groups do it under that 30 days, we can't say, yes, it's okay for them, but not okay for them. So that's my, like, are we going to follow policy? Are we going to follow unwritten, like, then why do we have a policy in place if we don't?
Well, to try to keep it in as reasonable a time period as possible. If you have no time period limit, then lord knows what kind of short notice you might get.
Right, but I think we need that written down.
Do you usually let them know that they're late and apprise them to be more careful in the future?
Could you repeat that, please?
Do you usually apprise them if they are late? That they're late, they need to be more timely in the future?
Yes. I have not been involved in the approval process or the processing of facility usage requests for a couple years, but when I have been involved with it, we've had groups that would come to us with a week before they want to rent. And I'm like, there is, we can't turn it around that quickly. And we're not going to be able to get everything we need from them and to the entire approval process. They can't use our facilities without that approved agreement.
Well, I think what, what's being suggested is possibly in the future, we should make up our mind if we're going to stick to policy or not. Right?
Well, we should stick to policy, that's why we have it. And like, like Adele says, if she has time, she has time. If it's, you know, the first week of school, no, there's no time. But if you come at a different, and it's, it's pick or choose. Are we busy, are we not busy? Do we have it, do we not? Like, it needs to...
And you accommodate it or not?
Be here in policy and we follow policy.
Okay, so our advice would be, stick to the policy. We have anything outside the 30 days, we prefer you ask them to apply for a later date. Okay. Meanwhile...
I've heard you guys...
We have this request in front of us. Does anyone want to make a motion related to this request?
I have another issue about this. Since Diana and I are both running for school board, I am wondering if, does this, might this at all be a conflict of interest for either of us to vote on this?
That's my thoughts of abstaining because we are involved in this.
That's up to you, if you feel it's a con, I don't see it as...
I don't see it as a conflict.
As a conflict. But if you do, if you feel it's a conflict, you may abstain. If we have a motion, you may abstain.
That's not for vote.
I would first need a motion.
But this is just a review, right, and a vote next week? Correct. Yeah.
I'm sorry.
It's just a review this week.
We don't need a motion.
Oh, you're right. I'm sorry.
Yeah.
But do we, do we usually vote on facilities usages or not?
This is the second time in many, many years that we've had anybody requesting a waiver of a fee. The last one was just last month.
Yeah. But I think she's asking, does the board vote on all facilities usage requests?
Yes.
Not waivers, but just all request?
Oh, no, you don't vote on all requests. No, sorry, misunderstood.
Okay.
Yeah. That's why we're taking this to the board, because they're requesting a waiver of the rental fee.
Waiver is something we should have to vote on.
Yes, waiver, yes.
And we can put it on the consent agenda. Do we have time?
Do I have time?
Do we have time?
Yes, because the 20th is Monday, our next board meeting, and their request to waive the fee is for the event which will be the next day.
Is there anyone that objects to it going to the consent agenda? Okay, then we will put it there, and those who feel they have to abstain are, you know, welcome to do that. If you want, we can make it a separate item. Okay?
I was advised that I really should talk to the solicitor to make sure that there was nothing...
Okay, we can, we can ask him. We can ask him if he considers that a conflict.
I would appreciate that.
Yeah, no problem. Okay, review of a lease proposal.
Yes, so there is a parcel of land, and I know we've discussed this before, over at Brownstown, it's like 3.4 acres of land, and it has been farmed for a couple years by a gentleman. That lease agreement has expired. Someone else had approached us about their interest in leasing that, those three acres of land. I pulled together an RFPO request for proposal. I sent it out to both, both parties, and first deadline, nobody replied back to me. Second ti, and I sent it out again, because the one gentleman said he just totally lost the paperwork. So I extended the deadline, and one gentleman who had expressed interest had submitted a proposal. So it's, number one, it's the only one. We were requesting a minimum annual rental fee of $600, which will cover the taxes that we have to pay to the city and county. And that's what he submitted to us.
What, what's, what up until now is being paid for the use of that land?
Nothing.
Nothing?
Nothing.
Is that the piece of land that isn't connected, so we can't make it a parking lot or extend a playground or anything to it?
It's connected to Brownstown. It is like right in the, when you come in the entrance and you're kind of going back into the parking area, it's a large plot of land over to the right. So it is right there.
So my question is, do we need that land over...
At the moment, no.
We just bought it, what, five years ago, six years ago?
Yeah, it's pretty close.
I'm sorry.
We bought it six years ago, recently-ish.
There's a lot we could do with the land, but whether we want to put that money into it now or later, like soccer fields or extra parking, because Brownstown still doesn't have a lot of parking.
So originally, it was, land was available, but land doesn't grow, so it was at a good price, so we decided to grab it in case somebody wanted to use it in the future for another expansion or just something, just to be able to have it. And then the whole process was to keep it mowed and at least somewhat maintain.
And, and it covers...
It's without a farmer doing it.
It covers the tax on it, right?
Yes, yes. Yeah, in order to do something else with the land, I spoke with Ken Johnson about it, and there's, it's kind of at an angle, it slopes down. We'd have to be doing, putting in a lot of work to level it off, but that's something we can certainly...
They plant soybeans and...
Yeah, and it has access to Newport Road there, so that's rather than, which is kind of handy for the future, because there's a lot of potential there, so.
Yeah.
It's a good piece of land that we bought.
Yes, yes.
But there's no plans for the land.
Yeah.
Might as well.
Is everyone okay with having that put on the consent agenda for next week?
Okay.
Okay. Our next issue is the finance update.
Yes, I just wanted to give you a brief review of our 2425 results of operations. This is still preliminary. The auditors are not completely finished yet. If we have any changes to this information provided to you this evening, I'm sure it'll just be minor. Tentatively, or typically, I should say, our schedule has been that the auditors come out and present at the first board meeting in November. We give you a brief update prior to, just so you know what to expect. I reached out to them today to confirm that date, so if anything changes, I'll certainly let you know. But on the first slide there, I'm giving you some highlights of, as far as our revenues go, how we fared against the budget. And overall, we were over budget and revenues by $800,000, and that was primarily due to some of the additional ready-to-learn adequacy supplement funds that we received from the state in '24, '25. I had some overages there, too, in the expenditures. I wanted to point out two areas in particular, and I feel like a broken record, I've been repeating this for a couple years. Our special ed costs continue to increase. That is because of the number of students that are in need of our services. In addition, the cost of the services continue to increase. What we're also finding out, too, and talking with Robyn Humm and with Sarah Schaefer on a regular basis, it is getting harder and harder to find placements for some of the students, and that just keeps increasing the costs. We had quite a few students that moved into the district in '24, '25, and then they were in need of PCA's, personal care assistance. So because that was written into their educational plan, we had to provide that also. So that continues to increase those costs. Our cyber school tuition also was higher than budget. I did a kind of a deep dive into this last week in looking at the cyber tuition numbers. We had quite a few students that were moving into a CV school district during '24, '25 that had already been with a cyber school, but they lived in a different district, like Kukaliko or, you know, some Okterera or something like that, but they moved into CV. So they continued and with services for the outside cyber school. So those are some of the two big areas that really took us over budget. We had some other unexpected, on the next slide, some other unexpected capital costs. We had the cost for running the fiber trenching water electric for the freight farm was $100,000. We had some issues with the high school chiller and some floor repairs that were needed, Fritz water heater. So I'm looking at those items, those first four items, to instead of taking them out of the general fund, to move them out of capital reserve fund. Because the capital reserve fund is very specific on what you can use out of their funds for. Once the money goes in, it's very restrictive. These all would qualify. And then the last two are related to the Fritz, the Fritz roof. That really should be coming out of the construction fund anyway, because when we start the Fritz repairs in a year, we'll be tackling that roof as well.
Quick question.
Certainly.
While we're talking about Fritz, I know there was that with the township and the crossing and the flashing, like, what's, where's that budgeting and...
Okay, good question. I'm glad you brought that up. So, one, we had been working with the township to get a flashing school zone sign. There's, there's a grant that we were going to apply for. It did not open until just recently, like, right in the summer. And they would not award that money until January. Well, fast forward, in June, we're going to start renovating the building anyway. So in working with a gentleman at the township and also Ken Johnson, we purchased school zone signs that one of our grounds gentlemen put in in the Fritz area. They also said that the township came in and they were putting some signs there as well, and that it seemed to help. I did check with Lena Cordero at Fritz to see if she'd had any feedback from any residents regarding the traffic and the speed, and she said, so far, everything has, has been fine. So what we'll do is with, as the Fritz renovations continue, is then make sure that we apply and get that grant, and then have the flashing school zones signs put in. Good point. Thanks for bringing that up. Okay, next slide. So Mrs. Groff had, had spoken to me a couple times in the last year or so.
I've bugged her to death, is what I've done.
I wouldn't call it that. You're just seeking confirmation of terminology. So a lot of, a lot of times, you know, in our world, certain terms mean certain things for us. And some people have referred to, like, oh, we'll take, we'll purchase this and we'll take it out of reserves. Well, what, you know, reserves might mean to one person, it might be something different to somebody else. So I tried to schedule this out for you so that you can see where all of our money is. So when I talk about fund balance, that's really the same thing as reserves. It's your savings account. So we're starting the year in the general fund with $15 million fund balance. And then here's our actual revenues and expenditures. So we end the year with $13 million in the general fund, fund balance. Our athletic fund is at a break-even. Food service, we have $3.5 million in food service there. I have athletic fund in there twice, please admit the second one. Construction fund has an ending fund balance as of June 30th of $17 million. That does not include the $15 million bond issue that we floated on July 15th. So that's in addition. Capital reserve fund, that has an ending balance of $6.8 million. That's where I was recommending taking some of these other repair projects out of the capital reserve fund. That $6.8 million reflects that transaction to use capital reserve... That $6.8 million reflects that transaction to use capital reserve funds for some of those repairs. Healthcare fund, $3 million. And to the discussion we had earlier about the Buckskin Boosters BAA, their current fund balance as of the end of the, June 30th was $262,000. So that's been an accumulation of all the fundraising efforts, participation fees and some facility rental fees that are allocated over to the BAA. And then the last item is Market Street Sports Fund. That was an account that was created at least 10 years ago. That consists of monies, the sponsorship monies that we get from Market Street Sports. All those sponsorship or all those commissions that we get go right into this fund. And we can use it for any, the intent was to use it for any athletic type capital improvement. But just kind of the nickname for us internally, we've just called it Market Street Sports since that's the only thing that goes in there. We have not paid any, anything out of this fund for quite some time. When we worked on the stadium project about 10 years ago, we did use some of these Market Street Sports sponsorship funds to pay off some of the cost overruns for that project. It wasn't much, maybe $150,000 or so. But since then, we've built up that balance. And
Can we go back to that a minute?
Sure.
Now, the Buckskins Boosters, that's the BAA now, right?
Yes, yes.
They have in reserve $262,000.
Yes.
Yet we continue to provide them with funds.
Yes.
I question that.
Dr. Hartman and I have been working, having discussions about this. That's one of the goals that we're going to
I mean, it's not taxpayer funds.
Correct.
But it is student participation fee funds.
Yes.
That could go elsewhere.
Yes. No, we've been
I'm sorry, didn't mean to interrupt.
No, that's okay, that's okay. We've been having conversations and trying to look at some options and what would be a reasonable method to spend some of the money down without, have a planned, a planned project, have something planned in place for drawing the funds down.
I don't mean to pick on them over others because I could probably, if I knew what everyone's doing, you know, I have an issue right now, and we've been working on it with CBEA, that they give us a gift of a freight farm and we spend 200 or more thousand dollars to accept it. It's a funny sort of gift. But we're working with them on that. But I, I don't know if you have guidelines for maximum caps on funds.
Yes, there are some bylaws. I can't, I can't tell you what they are off the top of my head that easily. But there are guidelines on awarding of certain projects.
I think we should start applying it.
So if I could add to that, just to, to add some clarity to the Bucks, the BAA, going back to last year, Adele's mentioned, we've started having conversations. BAA operates a little bit different than most of our outside organizations like booster clubs in that it is the only kind of district affiliated organization that we give some district revenue to support them. We don't give them taxpayer money, but we give them some gate money, market streets. Like some of that goes to BAA. However, the majority of their money is, is their own fundraising. So we've had the, the same question you just brought up, Ida. We've, we actually started addressing that last year to BAA's leadership's credit. They're very open to conversations. We were sort of in a holding pattern until we get our new, our new athletic director is settled. And we want to reengage in those conversations of, of just the organization, what, what their mission is versus what a booster club mission is versus, are we giving money to this group and not to this group and so on? So it is a, it's, it's an ongoing conversation we've been, we've been having.
As I said, I don't mean to pick on them because they do outstanding work, you know? And, and they raise a good deal of money. And I've always thought as if, they seem very fair in spreading across all of their members, you know, from their applications. It's just to see that much money to be sitting there. I wonder if that's necessary. I assume it's invested somewhere, making whatever minimum interest people make nowadays, you know? Half a percent or something.
Yeah, but you know, no, in all fairness, the, the money that's generated from marching band, football, basketball, track, clubs, they're all represented by BAA.
And when they make an application, if you notice, they have to declare what they've, what they have been raising on their own too.
So a lot of these revenues that is generated is attributed to the
That's not, that's not, that's not in this reserve. That, that's in their, that's in their club accounts, right?
Like ticket sales and, and fees from students that want to participate in the BAA?
Where does that go? When, when, when an individual booster club raises money?
Stays in their own bank account.
That goes in their own bank account.
They have their own separate account, separate from the school district.
Anything affiliated with CV that uses our name has to follow certain financial guidelines. And I don't know if I even want to ask, are there any of these clubs that are carrying large balances?
I don't believe so.
If they went to the BAA for a gift, they would have to declare that.
Each year, we summarize all the financial reports from the booster clubs because we have to do an IRS filing to maintain their nonprofit status. And I, again, it's been a couple of years since I've gotten into the weeds with that reporting. But I don't recall any significantly large balances.
Are you saying that you don't like that they have this much in their savings account?
No.
And you want them to spend this?
I always like a good savings account, but we give them money.
Because if you look at their revenues and expenditures of last year, it's barely $2,000 that they made.
Well, we kind of give them money. It's money that, in my opinion, it's money that's generated because of a BAA activity.
Because of what?
Of a BAA activity, like football is, is part of the BAA. Basketball revenue is part of the BAA. That's, it goes into a big, a pot?
No, if, if a booster club raises money for itself, like football, it stays in their account.
Yeah, it's not reflected on here.
So where do football revenue, ticket sales go? Does that go directly to football or does that go to the bucket?
So that, if you recall, in February of each year, we do that athletic cost by sport. As of right now, and Dr. Hartman and I have been, this is part of our big overall conversation. As of now, ticket sales are deposited into the general fund. We get about 55, 60,000 a year.
Goes in there?
Not into the BAA, it goes into the general fund. But then each year, the general fund transfers about $170,000 over to the athletic fund to help support the athletic fund. And Dr. Hartman's question was, why don't we just reduce the allocation from the general fund to athletic? And then give athletics the, the admissions.
I would just like to understand why they have that much and if it's necessary to maintain that, that's all. I'm not accusing them of, you know, hiding money or hoarding money. I just want to understand it better.
Does it come from participation fees?
Some of this comes from participation fees, yes. Participation fees, some of it goes into the athletic fund to, we can't make this more complicated than it already is.
There, there's a lot, there's a lot of conversations to be had about our whole booster ecosystem, I would call it. It's, it's rare that our setup in this district, that we, each sport has a booster club and then we have an overarching Buckskin act, like, and whether a district with a 54% free and reduced lunch should even be charging participation fees or if there's, there, there's a lot of conversations, I think, to be had around that whole topic. I don't want to take away from Adele's overall finance update, but I, I think that's an area that this year with the new athletic director is going to be a major focus.
Yes.
Let him know it's coming. Thank you.
Next slide.
Yeah, next slide.
Go ahead.
Yeah, next.
Next, next topic.
Next, yeah, next slide. Yes, yes, I was moving them to put them in a certain order, so, yeah. It was a duplication.
It's duplicating.
Yeah, thank you.
Even though it's all for dollars.
I know.
That's okay.
I knew you'd see that.
You saw that?
I knew you'd see, yeah, I saw it too. I was like, oh, shoot. Each year, we do have to have a resolution approved by you in our, in June, nearing the end of the budget process. And then again, when we have final numbers. PDE's requirement is that our unassigned fund balance cannot be more than 8% of our budgeted expenditures. This is a reallocation of our total fund balance. And by doing so, we have an unassigned general fund balance of $6.9 million, which is under PDE's requirement. So you will be seeing a resolution on the consent agenda next week. I just wanted to be able to provide you with this snapshot for now. And I thought since I was up here, I bore you a little bit more with updates on the state budget. Crickets, there's obviously not much going on. There was a bill that was passed last week, but they're saying that that isn't even going to be the final budget. So we're still waiting to find out what's going on. Some of the challenges we have, of course, are decreasing interest rates. So we're going to lose some revenue there. We had a real estate tax assessment appeal that we lost for a large retail business. And that cost us about $300,000 in real estate tax revenue for '25-26. That was already factored into our budget. So we're aware of that, but that's, it's not just a one-time deal. It's every year, we're going to continue to lose that revenue. We are going to be going into reassessment in 2027. And that usually generates a lot of assessment appeals then too. So we'll be seeing a good many of those coming through, I'm sure, when we get to about the July-August timeframe of, of 2027. Act One Index is decreasing from 4% for us down to 3.5. And again, we're just dealing with continued uncertainties right now. From a cash standpoint, I know that School District Lancaster has been in the paper a couple of times that they've had to borrow funds. They rely very heavily on state and federal subsidies. We do too, but we have a bigger tax base. So we're, from a cash flow percentage or standpoint, we're fine for now.
I, I need to backtrack just a minute. Do you have a number for last year's TIF?
Do I, could you repeat?
Have a number for last year's TIF?
You know what, I was wondering if you were going to ask that. I did not get the total combined, but I think back about nine months ago, when we were talking about the budget, I think the TIF was, I wanted to say about $690,000 maybe. I have not gotten
That's total, I meant for last year.
Just for last year. I have not received their invoice yet, but I, my estimated calculations say it's going to be about $150,000.
That keeps growing every year.
Yes, it does.
Thank you, I'm glad I did support, didn't disappoint you. Well, I always look for everywhere various ways you, you show us the budget.
Yeah, yes.
It's not always a line item.
Yes.
Thank you.
That is all I have for you. Anything for me, any other questions?
So for, for, for next week's consent agenda, it'll be the fund balance commitment?
Yes, and the year-end budgetary transfers.
Okay, any questions?
All right, thank you all very much.
Dr. Hartman, would you like to discuss work wisdom? Or would you rather not discuss?
I would rather not. No, I mean, it's, I provided the board with the information requested on the contract extension and happy to answer any questions before a vote is taken.
Can we back up one? What is TIF? T-I-F?
Tax.
Tax increment financing.
It was something we agreed to eight years ago. Some of us approved of it and some of it didn't. The idea is that any property that does improvements, the commercial, they were thinking of the commercial properties on the ship. If they do an improvement in their facade or their building that increases their assessment, we give the township a certain percentage of that increase. And it goes into a fund that's supposed to go for general improvements in the area. They, they had what I considered at the time a questionable defense as to how it helps. It involved the more the, the more that strip was active. It provided jobs for our kids and taxes for us. And I still couldn't see any reason to give them our tax money. But we are stuck with that for, is that 20 years? It's a 20-year agreement. We will continue to give them a percentage of the tax increases that any of those properties develop. Very few school districts have actually approved TIFs. They like to give you an example of Mayheim Township, which got Belmont. We're not going to get a Belmont here. But that's, that's always the kind of example they give for, you know, how much money the TIF can give. And we went for it. So every year, I ask how much it is just so I can grind my teeth. Any other questions? Okay, work wisdom. Any questions?
I guess just some comments since I was the one that was asking about it. So thanks for providing the follow-up information. You know, as we talked about before, like kind of reducing consultants and things and bringing things in-house. You know, we've spent, at least in the last 12 months, I think $120,000 with work wisdom. You know, maybe we want to look at, are there other companies that could do it, you know, for less cost? So, but I'm okay moving forward.
Yeah, and I think that's a good point. I mean, we're always looking, I, I know, and that's one of the reasons we provided the, the feedback from our admin team. I do, I think we've gotten to value added from, from what they provide. But I think, I think it's always prudent for us to look at what, what's out there and where we can cause. But I do think, you know, leadership development, I think, I think if you do that well, you get the return on your investment. It's my personal opinion. So I, I, I agree, you know, and that, that's kind of one of my pangs too. It is how much we're paying for outside services if we have the team here to do it. But I do, leadership development's one area where we, we sometimes overlook, look things. We provide a lot of training, a lot of professional development to teachers. But we got to make sure our leaders are supportive as well. So I do, the coaching they provide is, from my observation, is high quality. But, you know, as, as we continue to evolve as a leadership team, and we had to keep in mind the turnover we've had, that, that we've been slowly, that's slowly been subsiding, not slowly, quickly been subsiding. But we had a relatively novice admin team here for a few years who really needed a lot of support. As they, as they grow and evolve, that need I anticipate changing.
And what was the answer? You said a question about whether that or not, that was a two-year cost or a yearly cost. And I didn't bother looking it up because I figured somebody would answer it. The amount that was shown, is that for the two years?
So typically, it's about $50,000 per year for those coaching services. $50,000 per school year for those coaching services. The $20,000 additional that we're requesting is because we added in the assistant principal coaching this year. That's the new dynamic that we added on this year. But typically, it does run about 50 for the school year for the coaching and workshops. In the past, we've been able to cover it through ESAR for the most part. And I have to go back and, no, last year was ESAR as well. So I think this might be the first time it's, this school year is coming from the general fund.
This cost caught me a little bit, and then I remembered something. We approved Dr. Hartman's goals for the year. And one of them was improving professional development for, at the administrative level. So if we, if we approved the goal, we have to approve the program. But you're right, if we could find something more economic. I'm going to hold this because we have another contract to vote on, so we can vote on them together, if you don't mind. Dr. Hartman, do you want to talk about the
Do you have a question?
No. No.
There's a, you had a comment? You were going to say something?
No, I'm the.
No, okay.
Do you want to discuss item F, the Solient?
Sure, Ms. Schaefer couldn't be here tonight. She's actually at a, at a training, a leadership development training, actually. So, speaking of that, but, so I'm going to pinch-hit for her. This is a supplemental contract for Solient, which is an organization, they provide pupil services and special ed staffing, staffing services. Typically, when we need to hire a personal care assistant or a paraprofessional, we go through Sausal. They're our third-party contractor. However, there are times where they can't find somebody for us, or if it's somebody that needs a specific training or skill in non-local. So not to go into too specifics, because it's dealing with a student situation, but this is for a very specific need for an individual student who actually is attending a, attends a school outside of our district. It's a district student who attends a school, I believe in Inola, Pennsylvania, who requires transportation, requires an aid on that transportation due to requirements for harnessing and things like that. So it's a very, it's a very specific need that, based on the child's IEP, needs to be fulfilled. And Sausal couldn't meet that demand. So Solient is the organization that was able to give us a qualified individual for it.
These are positions that are really hard to fill.
The minimum hours, is that per week?
Yes, yeah.
Thank you.
Any concerns about this? If not, I would accept a motion to approve items E and F.
I move to approve items E and F.
We have a roll call, please.
Dr. Martin?
Aye.
Mrs. Fisher?
Aye.
Mr. Tally?
Aye.
Mrs. Kapka?
Aye.
Mr. Eby?
Aye.
Ms. Trowbridge?
Aye.
Mrs. Groff?
Aye. All right, thank you. And Dr. Hartman, would you go over the state golf tournament request?
Sure, so this is a request for an overnight field trip due to our, two members of our golf team qualifying for state, the state tournament and state college. So it's fairly, fairly standard. I know in the original proposal, they didn't have specifics on the actual hotel they were staying at. I do have that information due to it being students staying in the hotel with chaperones and parents. I don't know if I want to publicly announce where they're staying. You might have some crazy fans out there. But I could share that with any board members who would like to. But we do have that information, if anybody was wondering why that wasn't included in the original proposal.
And as always, I'm not often happy with the information they give us on these. In the past, we paid, I guess they're saying that we should pay again, but it had no cost. And I believe the event is paid by the district with question marks. That's not an application. But I understand Dr. Hartman is working on a more standardized application. We actually see the cost. Have you any concerns about approving this field trip? I thought I would take a motion.
Help me again, the cost will be, is something that we've already approved? Is that what you're saying?
It's not new money, it's come, ready to come out of the athletics budget.
But we don't know how much it is, that's right. It would be about the same as last year, whatever that was. That's why I've been asking to have a more specific standardized application. And they are working on putting one together. Meanwhile, we have this request in front of us.
I move to approve the request for the golf team trip.
I second it.
All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed or abstentions? If not, they get to go. Okay, the next thing on our agenda is a look at the tentative agenda for next week. The technology to provide you with that advance is a little complicated. But they're still working on it, and many of those contracts, we don't have. Now, they may be posted, if I'm correct, between now and Friday. So you may want to check back on your website during the week to see which ones are there to give yourself more time. That's the best we can do right now to fulfill that request. And it will be under drafts, right?
We have a couple of options there.
Okay, yeah. Where do they go to find the one that has any attachments?
So there's a couple of options. And I guess the board needs to decide what option you want me to do. The one, and I talked to several of the school districts who use Board Docs and use this method today and last week. So the one option would be, I make the meeting public on, say, Tuesday the week before. The meeting being public is the draft agenda. Then on whatever time we decide prior to the meeting, be there be one day prior or two day prior, then it goes public to, it goes active to the public automatically. Like, that's a setting within Board Docs. That is probably the easiest and best option at this point. I talked to E-Town, who does it that way. And I believe Manheim Township also uses that option. Right now, our setting in Board Docs is, the public sees it when I make it active, and that's when you see it, too. Except for Board President, Vice President, you see it. You can see it earlier, the draft. So what I would need to know is, what day of the week do you want to see the draft agenda active? Knowing it's not really finalized till maybe like Friday of the week before. And then, when does it get released to the public? Because of a Monday night board meeting, when you say one day before, it's midnight of the day before. So like, a Monday night meeting going active to the public would be Sunday at midnight. Two days before would be Saturday at midnight. So you just have to make a decision of one day before, two days before, three days before, whatever. And that's when it automatically goes active to the public, then.
Is there a law on how long prior to the meeting that the public has to see the agenda?
Twenty-four hours, according to our board policy and school code.
Okay.
And when does the public see it now? Is it just the twenty-four hours?
No, public sees it when I post it active, which is typically Friday, noon, Friday sometime during the workday.
I have a problem posting it that the public can see too soon, when really, it's not the agenda.
They won't.
It's a proposed agenda.
That won't change for them. It would still, they won't see it till it's finalized. Just, there's a difference between active and public. Making it active, we would choose. So the only, what we just saw is kind of unintended consequences. Keep in mind, you know, sometimes Maryland's working on a few agendas ahead as we get information. So if you're active, you may be able to see something for later in November and stuff. And keep in mind, a lot of times, it's just a duplicate of what was on that agenda from a year ago that we just haven't gotten to update yet.
And if you read it carefully, it'll say for twenty-four, twenty-five, or whatever. So you know it's not this year.
Right.
But we can't, we can't give you an agenda on Monday or Tuesday. Guarantee you'll have all the attachments.
Correct.
Yeah, they come in as the week goes on. And that's where we talk at a retreat, as I would send on, in those situations, on that Friday, I would send you, here's what's changed since we've made it active until now.
I guess I'd say since the public typically sees it on Friday, now, we would use Friday as, I don't know if it's, if you set the time or whatever, but sometime Friday. This is what I would recommend.
Well, it's always going to be at midnight. So it would be Friday at midnight.
Okay.
You know.
Basically, that's what you have now. When it goes public is when you see it. And is it concerned that that's not soon enough?
Are you asking?
I'm not sure I understand what our options are.
Well, with this, we would see the draft copy whenever it's posted.
The draft copy is always there. It just keeps changing, or cannot be changed for the board in general.
Right now, you and Diane always have access to the draft copy. The rest of the board does not.
Yeah.
We can give them access to draft copy, just like you have. That would be one option. But the con of that is, you would see all future draft copies in there that are not even anywhere close to being ready. That's what he's saying. Because like, right now, in my draft, I have out through December that I'm working on already, like, in various stages.
Well, my guess is, if they can get to the draft copy, the only thing they're going to open is the current one. As long as they understand that that's the only one that has any relevance. And even then, there are sometimes leftover items in that from previous, the previous year.
Probably more often than, yeah. Yeah. Or the, or the agenda item might be there and might be updated, but we might not have gotten all the documentation that goes with it until it's usually published at the end of the week.
It can be a very, a very rough thing. And you can't, you know, take it as gospel. But if you want, we could make the draft copy available.
Right, we can make a draft copy available without doing the first option I just talked about. But then, anybody going in there to look at the drafts, you need to know that you're only looking at the next meeting. You're not looking future.
But that would just be board members.
Correct, correct, correct. When I say anybody, I meant all board members, yes.
And there's no way you can open it to board members later in the week? Like, I get it by, you know, the.
Well, you have access twenty-four seven.
Yeah, in time for the agenda meeting.
Well, no, you have access twenty-four seven.
Before that, yeah. Would everyone have to have the same level of access? You can't have two levels of access for draft.
Yes, there can be two levels of access, yes.
I.
Which is me going in there and doing a toggle switch. Now we have access.
I think the board should get access starting Monday.
Okay.
Monday or Tuesday. Okay.
And then make it active to the public on Fridays, like we always do.
Yeah. But when you click on meetings, you hit draft, and by Tuesday, you'll be able to access it. I think making, what I see earlier than that available to everybody is going to be really confusing, believe me. I trip over it a lot.
So, yes, there's a setting within Board Docs that I can, on a Tu, if you choose Tuesday, I make, I make all board members have access to the draft agendas. Then on Friday, when I post, make it active for all public, then you would no longer have access to the draft again. Like, I'm just going there and to. So it's basically, I want to call it toggling back and forth.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Does that work for you? You can get into a draft as of Tuesday, once you post it publicly, then you have to get it that way. Is that okay? And all we can do is hope that these people will get us the contracts in time for you to read them in advance. Okay? Addressing the board, is there anyone in the public who would like to address the board on a general issue? If not, we'll move on to board matters. I would like to bring your attention to the thank you letter that we got from the middle school music department. I think that was very nicely done. I mentioned agenda items. And again, I have the fifteenth down to Dr. Hartman mentioned. And after that, I do, I do have a general announcement for you. In this board member election year, we will have our organization meeting on December first. When I moved into this position, some of us remembered how unprepared many of us were to understand what we had to do, what we couldn't, couldn't do, do, and how to do it. You did the work to become a functioning unit without losing our individuality. And we struggled sometimes to continue to move forward. But we continued learning and became a great and focused board. And I have given some thought as to how to handle past situations more smoothly. And the first step was to appoint Mr. Tally to head the leadership advisory. And Mrs. Trowbridge and Mr. Hurst to work with him in accordance with policy zero, zero, five. They will discuss who can best lead the board. And let me go back to my usual seat. And perhaps identify opportunities to prepare future officers to understand the two available offices. As you know, I think of it not as a nominating team, but as a leadership advisory who could share the deliberations from year to year. And to that end, I'd encourage anyone interested in serving in a board office either now or eventually to notify Mr. Tally. Note, we will be welcoming four new or returning directors. I would like to take this opportunity to thank Dr. Hartman, who will continue to fulfill his responsibility as the tenth board member and serve as a vital resource and to work cooperatively with us. Are there any other issues the board would like to address? If not, I will take a motion for adjournment.
You said you had a thank you letter for it?
We all got a copy of that as an attachment.
I think that may have just been sent to administration, maybe you.
I'll be glad to share my copy. If anyone else wants to see it, we can pass that around. It had to do with, what program was that?
I think it was Mr. McGaro is the, is the department chair for the music department, thanking, letting us know that they, the music department was thankful of the middle school administration for their support.
Yes.
Their program. And being willing to meet with them about schedules and things like that.
But it's always good for us, I think, to see feedback from staff on something that they think is working well, be it a specific program or a general support from the administration. I'm still waiting for that motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We return.